All in favor of motion, say aye. Most of the... I'm afraid it comes up there. And I'm familiar with members of the public, because it's a different office or discussion. Let's take them in three minutes. As you want to turn and lock their desks before. Say aye now, and we're going to the transition report.
Thank you, sir. A couple of announcements. One is tonight, in the Anderson Center here, there will be a performance by the Justin Pearce 410. And so those will be a good one, like the kind of starts at 7:30. I have tickets here for board members if anybody wants to come on. Check with you after this and give them to you. The other thing to remind everyone is the graduation, spring graduation is scheduled for May the 13th. For the board members to be there, not later than 6 o'clock to line up. I'll have Dr. here at home when that... Please be there on time. And we'll send out, while reminded to the speaker and Harrison Commander and so forth. Board election update. Ms. Avens, can you give us this? She's suffering with a bad throat allergies and stuff.
The Clinton Council met last Tuesday, and Representative Cleveland was there. He gave an update saying that the window to move the election closed back in 2015. And to get this through the House and the Senate next session. He needs legislation from the school by November. So they're going to start working on that. But that won't take until... We'll know in three. So it's a motion, and the city council members would all receive.
Oh, we need a... We'll do a motion on that, thanks, bud.
No, no, because we don't know what legislation is going to be. Let's just leave it alone until it happens. Because we may not have to move it off. Okay, pictures. Pictures of the month. Who is first on? Jackie? Dean Harris?
Good afternoon. Picture there is our SAP Core 13 completion ceremony on Fort Hood. It's a TIL program where we have our soldiers that are transitioning out of the military. And each cohort, we have a ceremony for them, representing and appreciating them for them earning their TS 410 certification. Picture there with the chancellor is one of our top students, Mr. Yi Young-King. And we had a total of 19 students actually earned their certifications on March 30th.
Dean Harris, you have another graduation. Is that correct?
Uh, yes. Uh, no, sir.
Oh, that's the four years. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Trying to help you out. Dean Fisher, you're up.
Well, I'll be there. That's right. There you go. Absolutely, absolutely. Good afternoon. So on Saturday, April the 9th, five of our culinary arts students competed in the That Takes the Cake competition held in Austin. All five earned first place honors in each of their competition categories. So pictured here, if you start on the left, is our gold medalist in the Culinary Student Wedding Cake Tiered category. Student Rosa Carr and her five-tiered entry titled Glistening Romance. Student Carr also garnered the Best Overall Culinary Student honors. This is the fifth consecutive year a CTC student has been atop the podium. So quite remarkable. Next is Culinary Student Novelty Single Tiered Category Gold Medalist. Student Crystal Kiffin and her entry titled Congratulations Graduate Chef. To her right is student Landgriff, and gold medalist in the Culinary Student Special Techniques category, with her mixture of roses and peonies and leaves that are made from rice paper and gum paste. And the final student, or the final photo is student Anna Rodriguez and her entry titled Vintage Era. The gold medalist in the Culinary Student Novelty Tiered Category. Next slide. This past Thursday, April 21st, our mathematics department hosted Math Appreciation Day in the rotunda adjacent to the Maymore Science Theater. As pictured here, students experienced a host of fun math events to include engaging puzzles, board games, a scavenger hunt, and escape room that's quite popular, culminating in a math jeopardy competition. As mentioned during the workshop last week, the Fine Arts Department presented its spring production titled Native Gardens. The comedy tells the tale of two sets of neighbors who are navigating competing interests. Delicate disagreement about a fence turns into an all-out border dispute, exposing race, taste, class, and privilege. There were three offerings this week. And lastly, on Tuesday last week, the Fine Arts Department also opened the spring semester student art show with a reception that honored the exhibition winners. Pictured in the upper right-hand corner, holding her certificate for second place, is Sherry Wilson, next to her Ceramics and Wood entry titled Twiggy. Pictured in the upper-left corner is the charcoal drawing titled Traces of Time, an honorable mention entry by Kiki Kelly. Just below is Linda Nicely's third-place entry, A Silver Bracelet with Stones, titled Mine. And centered on the bottom, awarded first place is a mixed media drawing by Lindsey Hawk titled Winter Lake. As a reminder, the community is invited to view the exhibit in the Fine Arts Teaching Spaces, Building 218, from now until the 5th of May. Thanks.
Thank you, Dean Fisher.
Good afternoon. Pictured on this slide is an event that Dr. Garrett hosted last week on the 21st of April for the Counselors' Breakfast. It was attended by Colleen ISD, Copperscove ISD, and as well as some service area representatives from Marble Falls and Vermont. Dr. Garrett put on this to provide some information to our ISDs about what we do. YCTC is an important college destination for our local high school students. And we did have some guest speakers with the Colleen and Copperscove superintendents, Dr. Kraft and Dr. Burns. So that was a great event. And you'll see, we had some fun there, doing some projects that Dr. Garrett led us in. Some understood better than others what the project was. We also got some great feedback from the folks who attended, saying that it was a valuable event, and they learned quite a bit about CTC for that. Next slide. Dean Starkey's area did host this month our Career Services Spring Semester Career Fair. And this was the first one hosted by the Career Center since the pandemic. The last one they hosted was virtual, so this was the first one in person, I should say. There were 37 vendors coming out to recruit potential employers, employees. And so there were five total from the CTC departments who came to promote jobs that we have here on campus. And there were 20 first-time participants from vendors that were coming to show their jobs. There were a total of 130 job seekers, of 100 of which were CTC students. So hopefully, we got some students placed out into the job field. Next slide. And lastly, this month, we did host the 13th of April a Spring Transfer Fair out of Student Services. So we did have a total of 29 colleges and universities come out to speak to our students about potential transfer to their programs. These did range from across the state of Texas to even some outside colleges that came, most notably one from Oregon. There were only 73 students who came over to that program that we captured that signed in. But it was a great turnout, considering some of our past turnout from COVID. So the... The transfer fair hopefully provided some great information to students to get them onto their next step in the pathway. Some student quotes came back in that it allowed them to get clarity on what steps were needed, and that they thought they had known which college they were going to, but they were able to get some information and expand their options. The college representatives that came out did enjoy the event. They thought the traffic was great, and they were very thankful to be able to come out to the CTC campus and talk to our students. Thank you.
Are these annual events? All of these are the...
Career... Career Center is annual. The transfer fair we host in the fall and the spring. And Counselors' Breakfast is annually there.
Thank you. We have one more slide? Yes, we do. Robert?
Good afternoon. The photos that you are seeing here are from our golf tournament that took place last Friday, the 22nd of April, at Stonetry Golf Course. We had a fantastic turnout. We had 100 golfers, 26, or sorry, 28 sponsors. So it was a total of 25 teams. Were able to raise approximately $20,000 for the event. And we just had a really great time. Everybody had great things to say about the tournament, and we're excited about the 28th Annual Golf Tournament that took place. The photos represent Dr. Anderson's team, Mr. Tim Schimmel's team, Mr. Anderson's team over in the right corner, and then Dr. A.D.'s team, and the chancellor as well. So we just had a really great time, and it was well-received.
Charles provided the...
Yes, he did. You did a phenomenal job. Yes, thank you so much, sir, for that. And everybody had great reviews of your copler.
It was a great turnout. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that completes my report. Thank you, sir.
I'm going to pass a discussion approval of 2022 and the financial statements.
Mr. You should all have a copy of your financial statements for March. If you take a look at the very first page and three lines from the bottom, you'll see the current year decrease is about $1.7 million in the hole compared to $1.9 million up at the same time a year ago. Two main reasons for that, the two culprits that we've been talking about for quite some time are tuition is down 14% and our state funding is down 13%. If you... If those two were flat, we'd actually be positive this year as opposed to negative because of the other things that we've done, put in place. But it's kind of hard to completely offset those dramatic decreases that we had in place. If you'll remember when we built the budget, there were items we put in the budget that were above and beyond that we haven't been able to do for the last few years because of the HERF funds that we had in place from the federal government. So we knew this was going to be a tough year to hit the black. But it is following, if you look in the middle column, third lineup from the bottom, a year when we made almost $23 million. The loss, while we never like to have one, it's a little easier to swallow when it's followed by such a great year as we had last year. We've just got to continue to be stalwart in our approach toward expenditures for the remainder of the year to try to keep this number down as low as possible. I have any questions?
Any questions?
Looks like the yields are starting to slowly creep up.
They are. The yields are continuing to rise. You know, Charles, I appreciate you bringing that up, sir. If you, if, when you all have a chance to look, there is actually a spot in here where I do some benchmarking. 30, 60, 90, you know, 180 days out. And if you look at the 90-day number, I'm going, I'm getting old here. Between the current year and a year ago, we were at .01%. Yes, that's .01. To now, it's at .53%. And the yearly rate was at .06, and now it's 1.6%. So we're actually, it's been a long time since we've been above 1% on a year-to-year number. So they are going up. They will continue to rise, but of course, we all know as they rise, inflation raises, rises even faster, and the cost of living goes up even faster. So while we're getting a little more bang for our buck, everything we buy is costing more.
All in favor of motion? All in. Motion made in second, and in discussion on that motion. All in favor of motion, say aye. I'm going to assess instead of approving, both division rates taken. All this worth $20,000 and just $100? I don't miss $124, almost $250 per senior student.
Yes, sir. As we've discussed at the last two board meetings, this is the recommendation from the administration to raise each of those rates. The current average for in-district tuition and fees is $110. So while this is a $5 increase for our students per semester, it still puts us below the current state average. And my guess is that most of the community colleges in state, I've heard from at least 25 to 30 of them, that are going to raise their rates as well. So it will continue to put us probably right along the mid-range of where the rest of them are.
Any questions? Second. Motion made second, and in discussion on that motion. All in favor of motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion first.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Number seven is discussing sort of approval of both different situations for graphics and print. Four is $110.
Chairman Weaver, members of the board, Chancellor Yiannopoulos, fellow attendees. As to Agenda Item 7, with the concurrence of my colleague, Mr. Bob Liberty, I appear before you today seeking board trustee approval as it relates to the differential tuition as proposed and presented during the workshop last week. Specifically, we seek board trustee approval for a $10 per credit hour differential tuition to five press operations Level 1 certificate courses and six graphic design Level 1 certificate courses. We've scaffold into a 14-course graphics imprinting program Level 2 certificate. We also seek board trustee approval of a $15 per credit hour differential tuition to 10 biology prefix courses for both our science and our non-science majors. And lastly, we seek board trustee approval of $12 per credit hour differential tuition across 12 specific courses, which scaffold into a Level 2 medical coding and billing certificate. Rate approval would be effective 1 August 2022.
So currently, is there no differential tuition between those courses currently?
Correct. These would all be known.
Second. A motion made second to approve the... Any questions? Any discussion on that? All in favor of motion, say aye. I'm going to write this, discussing sort of approval of an increase in aviation science flight fees to the following amounts. ARP is 13 to 15, and it's $9,022.50. ARP 22 to 50 is $6,035. ARP 1255 is $10,070. ARP 239 is $1,095. ARP 2351 is $250,000. 2366 is $6,065. 2342 is $4,075. ARP 2243 is $6,025.
Thank you, sir. Again, as to Agenda Item Number 8, again with the concurrence of my colleague, Mr. Bob Liberty, I appear before you today seeking board trustee approval as it relates to the aviation science flight fees as proposed and presented during the workshop last week. Specifically, we seek board trustee approval to increase flight fees in the eight course offerings to the dollar amounts mentioned just recently. Rate approval would be effective 1 August 2022.
A motion made second to approve the request, in discussion on that motion. All in favor of motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Number one is discussing approval of the... Contract and licensed architects, some system. 35 blocks for the ADA stands, June 1, 2022.
Yes, as we discussed at the board workshop, the college needs to exercise the first period option for the approved consulting contract. As we discussed, the contract utilizes approved consulting agreement as our independent licensed architect, which was required by the Department of Justice to have one in place. And so with that, we seek board approval to exercise the first option period for the approved consulting contract in an amount not to exceed $170,000.
Any questions, Mr. Johnson? I think I have a question. Motion made second, and in discussion on that motion. All in favor of motion, say aye. I'm going to 10 and discuss the sort of approval award of contract and licensed services LLC for the fire alarm suppression system services and repair. Initial item of one year, the four-year option course for the 3rd of June 1st, 2022, to the 5th of July 2023, not to exceed $200,000.
Yes, a request for proposal number 22-010 was issued for the annual maintenance of the fire alarm and suppression systems. There were three responses back to the RFP, one of them being a company, Impact Fire Services, who we have currently been using for the last five years. The results of the assessment indicated that Impact Fire Services would be considered the best-site contractor for the college. As you mentioned, the contract term would be for initial one-year or one-year options. So with that, the administration recommends the award of a contract to Impact Fire Services for fire alarm suppression services and repair in amount not to exceed $200,000.
Any questions, Mr. Johnson? Say aye now, I don't have any motion. A motion made second to approve the request. All in favor of motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion first. Number 11 is discussing sort of approval. Exercise the second option, the contract and private services. The customer travel, there's first, that's 100,000.
Yes, sir. As discussed at the board workshop, we're seeking to exercise the second option year of the travel services contract with Casimulca. I'm going to have to answer any questions at this time.
That's second. Motion made second, and in discussion on that motion. All in favor of motion, say aye. Why are you still up there? $10? Well, that's discussing sort of approval, exercise the second option. Here for the contract, food services, western dining, the tier of course, second, to the all second person.
Yes, sir. As discussed here again, we're looking to exercise the section option, second option year of the Greg Western Dining contract. Again, this does increase according to CPI, which was 6% at the time, and that increases about $1.29 increase as a result. If there's any questions, I'm more happy to answer them.
I was asking a question. What we do is kind of evaluation of students about their good or bad feelings about the...
Yes, sir. Actually, we do like to ask that question. So most recently, probably for several months now, they actually have a barcode scanner, and the students can actually scan in and then take a survey. And in that survey, we've gotten a lot of positive results. And some of the feedback that we get were, for example, somebody may say, I'm on keto diet, and I'll be honest, I don't know what that is. That we will then, they will actually then create or tailor some lunches for that person and put that out there so there's more variety. And so we've been able to use that now. I'm big about data. So we've been using some of these tools now to create data and metrics so that we can not only track whether customers are happy or not, but more we can track their tastes. And some...
Is there a... Do you all have a hard box comment, box center? Also, is it all just electronic?
No, we went with electronic. We had considered paper, but sometimes they put other things in there than what they're supposed to. So this just made it easier and trying to keep the high school students out of trouble.
Well, all the comments positive or were there negative ones?
No, I would say the vast majority are positive. And an example of a negative comment that stuck in my head was just that, it is that kind of a keto one, that we didn't really offer any variety that was considering folks that may not want to eat meat or eat plants or food. Sorry. As a result, you know, what we're able to do then is be more considerate to some of that. Because they're not going to be the majority, but for those few people that eat, that would like that, we're actually now able to offer that variety. And so I think it's a very powerful tool. That, you know, in the past, we would do kind of random surveys, but I think having this continuous flow is much more powerful.
It is good.
I'm sorry, get it off my...
Any other questions? Yeah, motion has consecutive, and in discussion on that motion. All in favor of motion, say aye. Number 13 is discussing sort of approval of all the board housing rates effective for fiscal year 2023. All the spring semester, $5,160 for second occupancy. $2,740 for double occupancy in some semester. $1,025 for second occupancy. $75,000 for second by like a double occupancy. And the total increase is raised to $100 for the fall spring. And $65 for the summer.
Yes, sir. Again, as we discussed at the board workshop, the rate increase, we believe, is not only conservative but appropriate given what we've seen within increased costs and inflation. And so as a result, these are the rates we're requesting to be able to produce for the next fiscal year, our next school year. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer these at this time.
Second. Motion made second to approve the reasons. In discussion on that motion. All in favor of motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion first. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And thank you to the 75 second dollars.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You lead the address.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Number 14 is discussing sort of approval of purchase of Snap-on mechanical electric torching equipment in Snap-on Industries for the...
Good afternoon, Chairman Weaver, CTC Board Trustees, and Chancellor Yiannopoulos. I'm Willie Kershner, the Department Chairman and Professor of Basil in Industrial Technology. CTC's purchasing policy requires CTC board trustees action for $50,000 or more in purchases. Before you, today, our consideration is approval for the purchase of the Snap-on Mechanical Electrical Torch Certification Equipment using the Cole Perkins Grant Funds of $50,087.92. Students earn Snap-on Certifications as proof of achievement. These stackable credentials increase employment potentials and on-the-job productivity. Central Texas College requests this equipment from the Texas Higher Education Coordination Board through the 2021, 2022 Cole Perkins Basic Grant. Any questions?
We've got it under $87, I understand. Sir, everything is rising rapidly as we're speeding. So, bud.
Second. Motion made second, and in discussion on that motion. All in favor of motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion first.
Thank you very much.
Number 15 is discussing sort of the renaming of the open server for 2009 for UHBC.
Good afternoon, Chairman Weaver, Chancellor Yiannopoulos, and Board of Trustees. On behalf of the CTC administration, we're seeking approval for the board regarding the renaming recommendations that were presented last week. Reverse renaming recommendation presented was the Aviation Complex Flight and Operations and Maintenance Hangar located at Skylark Field.
My name is Soffe. We have agenda items we have to use. So we can discuss UHBC building 219 first.
We have agenda items we have to use, so we'll discuss U H Beck building two oh nine first.
Okay.
Then we'll have another motion for the second.
Correct.
To keep it in order.
Okay.
So let's talk about U H Beck buildings.
Okay. The renaming recommendation that was presented was for the Enrollment Center. On behalf of the CTC Administration, we're seeking the approval of the renaming to Ula H Beck Enrollment Center.
Motion would make second in discussion on that motion. I think we understood that we're going to get the actual name of that really going.
Correct, yes.
All of the favor the most say aye?
Aye.
Now, we'll go to the next item.
Okay.
I remember sixteen, discuss the certain names in Skylark Field Aviation Complex with Big Jones.
Okay. Uh, the renaming recommendation, on behalf of the CTC Administration, I, uh, would like to present what we discussed last week on the renaming of the Aviation Complex Operations and Maintenance Hangar located at Skylark Field. Uh, we ask for your approval of the renaming to the complex to be William P. Jones Complex Flight Operations and Maintenance Hangar. Thank you.
And next slide is number eighteen, announced at the time and location, board workshop scheduled for Tuesday, May seventeenth, twenty twenty one, at one PM, uh, one AM. And the board being scheduled for nine twenty-two. We do not have any, uh, items for executive session today, so we're here. And one forty-nine, three, okay. All of the favor, both of you say aye?
So there wasn't one after all?